Good morning, everybody. I would like to call to order the Dutchess County IDA meeting for October. Jasmine, welcome. By the way, Jasmine is back. Will you please take a roll call to see tenants?
Tim Dean.
Here.
Mark Doyle.
Yeah.
Kathy Bauer. Amy Bonadere. Jamie Pecone.
Here.
Alto Rajani.
E. Joe Houston.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I'd like to remind everybody of our conflict of interest policy. If anybody has a conflict with any matter that's on the agenda, I would ask that they please let us know now about it. Okay, hearing none. If for any reason during the meeting you become aware of a potential conflict, please let us know and state your conflict, and we'll determine whether it's something that requires that you be recused. Sarah, proof of meeting notice was posted?
Yes.
Okay. Any bills in communications?
No.
Okay. Approval of minutes from the July 17 meeting? If everybody has had a chance to review those, is there any changes or corrections that need to be made?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay, I have a motion. Would somebody be willing to second that motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, Jasmine, will you please take a vote on the approval of the minutes?
Mark Doyle.
Approved.
Jamie Pecone.
Approved.
E. Joe Houston.
I think I should recuse as I was not present at the meeting. I wasn't even on the board at the time.
Ah, well.
Tim Dean.
Approved.
It doesn't pass.
We don't have a quorum.
So we don't have a quorum for that. But I did see while we have quorum in the room, we have Amy Bonadere zooming in.
Okay.
And I believe it's up to the board to decide whether, because we have quorum in the room, whether you would like Amy to vote.
I think my feeling is that for the purpose of approving minutes, I think that would be okay. Does anybody else have any objections to that?
No.
Okay, do we need, Don, do we need to make an official motion to do that? Or is it just an acknowledgement? Okay. Could we bring Amy in? Hello, Amy. Amy, I hope you heard the conversation. Would you be willing to vote either yea or nay for the approval of the minutes?
She's muted.
You're muted, Amy?
She's working on it.
Could you hear that, Amy?
Because I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I'm gonna hop out and come back in.
Okay. One second here.
Nervous.
Maybe because the volume's turned out.
It's the Bluetooth in the car.
Yeah.
But we can hear her, which is strange.
Yeah.
Good morning. I got you.
Can you hear us? Hello, hello?
Hi.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Need to have her on video. Yes. Okay. There we go. Can you hear me, Amy?
Yep, all good.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the minutes of the July meeting. And we don't have a quorum within the meet. We have a quorum, but we don't have enough votes to approve or disapprove of the minutes. And would you be willing to make a yea or nay vote for the approval of the minutes?
I approve.
Okay, thank you very much. So we do have the minutes approved. All right. Report of the treasurer.
Yes. Looking at the balance sheet for September, we have in cash right now 4.7 million. But of that, we have a liability for the pilot payments of 2.3 million. So they came in at the end of the month. So we'll be dispersing them this week. Looking at the now, we have revenue of 544,000 before pilots to a budget of 925,000. So right now, we're unfavorable by 381,000 on the revenue side. Expenditures, total expense 474,000 to a budget of 749,000. So right now, we're favorable by 275,000. We will be pretty much on budget for the year in expenses. We're at a net income right now of 70,000 to a budget of 176,000. So right now, we're unfavorable by 106,000. And we'll see the estimated year end in the budget when we look at the budget.
Okay, and again, this is an item for review. We don't have to vote on this particular item.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Administrative fees for the remaining of the year. Are we seeing any coming in?
Sarah?
So if, so we are, the board is going to be considering two potential projects.
Right.
And so if those two potential projects are approved by the board, and then they go through their closing by the end of the year, then yes, that would be it. But as far as approved projects needing to close, we have, all projects have closed.
Okay.
And I know that we have talked, actually, I'll delay until the budget when we talk. But we know that there are years when we grossly exceed our budget for revenues, and there's years when we don't. So while we like to hit our budget every year, it's, based on what we do, it's often not realistic. So I don't want people to think that we have to focus on hitting our budget every year from an expense or revenue standpoint. Okay, so that leads us to the next report, which is the Finance Committee. And we're gonna talk about the budget.
So the Finance Committee met last week to review the budget for 2025.
Sarah, maybe you would talk about who's on the Finance Committee?
So right now, on the Finance Committee, Chair of the Finance Committee is Kathy Bauer, and Jamie is on the Finance Committee. Don Sagliano used to sit on the Finance Committee. So we are down one member for the Finance Committee, and hopefully that'll be filled soon. But it was Jamie and Kathy who were at the meeting last week.
With you?
With me and with Jane. And we went over the proposed budget for 2025. And then, but Jamie will make a presentation for the budget.
Okay.
Presentation, here we go. Okay, so as Tim just mentioned, you know, some years are lean, some years are not. Looking at next year's proposed fees, it is $175,000 in projected administration fees. That's a very conservative number. As opposed to years past, things seem to have slowed a little bit post-COVID. Sarah, if you want to take us through any other numbers, the compliance fees are what we are paid to...
Just to file for Paris, collect all the data that we are required to do and reporting. So that's an annual fee.
Right.
Depending on when the project was approved, it could be $500. And then the board then revised the policy and the fee has become $1,000. So depending on that, it's a combination of 500 or $1,000.
Yeah, the entire narrative is right behind it. So the other fees include related to the workforce, compliance monitoring and a reasonability studies. Interest income is based on all the money that we have invested in CDs that are insured, and we were receiving decent interest rates. We're gonna scale it back just a little bit with the Fed cutting the rates anticipating for next year. And also, if our admission fees are down, we will be dipping into our bank accounts, which is what we normally do. Nothing to be scared about. The audit is 12/9. We do an extra $1,000 for the software usage for the lease to be in accordance with FASB. What else do we have, Sarah?
The professional service contract, the contracts that we have with, the IDA has with the LDC, Dutchess Tourism and Hudson Valley Agritourism. You can see it broken down.
It's broken down, down the bottom. You'll see line 10, then you see line 10 broken down into the three different categories.
Yep. And then the professional services are the other services, such as our legal services, the local workforce compliance, a reasonable study transcription, and video services.
So basically, it's just a templated format with the numbers plugged in of our audited numbers for 2023, our approved budget for 2024, our estimates for 2024, then basically our guesstimate or budget for 2025. It's here and ready to be voted on.
Just a couple of questions I have. So what, I know that we've had some discussions about some of our professional service contracts. And are we budgeting or are we considering increasing any of those compared to? I mean, I know some of them have been increased, but some of them have been the same for years.
I think last year, we did some increases on, right?
Right, so can you just review that for us?
Yes, so we did increase the LDC contract from 150,000 to 200,000. That was to pay partially for the compliance officer that we now have onboard as well as some increased requirements, reporting requirements that the LDC is taking on on behalf of the IDA. The Dutchess Tourism, that contract has remained the same. We did increase film a few years ago, but otherwise, the request has remained the same. And Hudson Valley Agritourism, we did increase it last year from 35,000 to 30,000. That was an unsolicited increase. We just felt that the work that they have been doing and things like that. I do know that talking to, I'm forgetting his name, Todd. Todd, talking to Todd, that he's been, he's been asking the other counties to match our 30,000. I don't know how successful, I know a couple of counties. Yeah, we're kind of pushing back on that. So he said that he was happy with the 30,000 until he could get the other ones up to match ours, you know.
We're gonna have a presentation by tourism today?
Yes.
How have your other revenue sources been this year, prior year?
So grants are always fluctuating. And so what we can do and what we can get, and also what we can manage, because so many of them require matches. And so, you know, a couple of years ago, we really maxed out. We said, what is the most we can do? We've got a CFA grant. And didn't expect to get all that we asked for, because nobody ever gets all the, and we did. And so it was a good thing we had done that exercise to make sure we could do that. So that limits us in a way. The county has gave us a modest increase last year. But the problem and the challenges, as you know, costs for everything have gone up. The way we have to do business has changed a lot with technology and what's available. We can always wisely spend more. And we'll talk about, there is an opportunity when we go through this. You'll see as we talk about.
Is there, are you missing out? Well, first of all, if we were to give an increase, would that be considered something that could be used for matching funds?
For grants?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just thinking of the multiplier effect.
Right.
Of that possibility. Maybe perhaps we should delay any, we can always make modifications later. But again, I just, I think we have talked as a board. Looking to, if we have the available funds, you know, inflation alone and some of these organizations that we support, and we support them because we feel that they help us to improve the economic vitality of our county. So giving some consideration to what I'm gonna call really a lagging inflationary increase in some of these budgets, which we've done. Because tourism, I think, has been the same for years and years and years. And, and, you know, just if you just take inflation alone, they have really effectively been receiving less money from us in that time period. But again, I think maybe what we'll do is delay any discussion of that until after we hear from tourism and maybe get a firmer handle. Is there anybody else, Sarah, that we should be thinking about within this budget that, you know, as the director, you feel that us priming that pump of, you know, providing them with a little bit more funds would help them to leverage for us?
I mean, I am, I mean, Melaine and I talk almost, you know, quite often. It's very convenient that she's next door. So, you know, we have talked about, and she'll mention a little bit, about maybe project-based, where the IDA can, you know, maybe fund a project or initiative that they are going to do, where it could be, you know, temporary and...
That's a good idea.
You know, something like that. So...
So it would be, it would not necessarily be reoccurring?
Right.
Exactly.
They don't have to count that continuity.
Yeah.
But, you know, if you look at our last two years, you know, we had a, we had an excess cash flow of 1.15 and 654 projected for this year. It's $2 million. But next year, we're gonna lose 400,000. So we have to watch what we...
Exactly.
But the one-time gift or something to do something good for tourism is a good idea.
And oftentimes, our expectations are exceeded in their revenues.
Right.
We try and be very conservative in what is happening. And who's to know, right? So, but again, I agree with Jamie that we, you know, we need to make sure that we don't overcommit in the long term. Okay. Any other comments on the budget as it is currently outlined by anybody?
You had highlighted the supplies and operating expenses.
Oh, that's...
The Paris report.
That's, so I'm sorry, that's not, that meant to be unhighlighted.
Oh, it's just a, I was wondering.
Yeah, that was just an internal thing that when we did the, it's formula-based. And the formula in the, in the previous draft needed to be updated. So we had, we'd highlighted it and we did update it, but then we forgot to unhighlight it, so I'm sorry.
However, in your proposed budget, you're zeroing out supplies.
So yes.
Is that realistic?
Yes, so because the LDC is actually the entity that buys the supplies. And, and so the IDA, and if you see, even in 2023, the supply line has been zero. You can see right here.
Yeah.
And so it's because the LDC, through the contract that the IDA has with the LDC, we buy the supplies for that.
That's where there would be reflection in basic differences.
But this report, Sarah, again, is, is a copy from the Paris report, correct?
So yes.
That back page with the...
Yeah, the back page is what will be filed with Paris. So, you know, what we are hoping after the review of the budget is that the board would approve the budget and also approve submission to Paris. So the little tiny print is Paris requires us to do a three-year projection. So it's just a 2% increase because we don't know what, you know, our budget would be. But, and Paris asks for kind of a condensed version of the budget. So you have, what Jamie went through is a detailed version, and then...
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Sarah, any comments from you, anything else?
Yep, you can do it up.
Thank you. All right, so at this point, we are looking for a motion to approval, to approve the 2025 budget as well as submission to Paris.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, would somebody be willing to second it?
Second it.
Thank you. Okay. Jasmine, will you please take a vote on that?
Mark Doyle.
Approved.
Amy Bonadere.
Approved.
Jamie Pecone.
Approved.
E. Joe Houston.
Approved.
Approved. Okay, and we can count all votes. Amy's included because of our quorum here. Okay. All right, and the unfinished business. Okay, new business.
Yes, so we have, the board this morning will be considering a couple of projects. The first one is the Harlem Valley Homestead. And I will, we have people representing project. I'll let them in the room.
Great, that'll be good.
It's your neck of the woods.
It is.
My neck of the woods.
Some time ago, met Josh Rattell.
You what?
Met. I know the, well, I know, I've met him. But it's an interesting, interesting, you probably know the area.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
155 going through to...
And I did read it.
Back and beyond.
Because at first, I thought might have been Starkdale, which is taboo and porn and...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rich Sandor.
Thanks, David.
Hi. Hey.
Okay, so this morning, we have with us Rich Sandor and Josh Rattell from Hudson Valley Homestead. Rich Sandor is Hudson Valley Homestead's counsel from Cuddy &amp; Fader.
Okay, and Josh?
And Josh is the applicant.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. All right, so Sarah, would you like to kick this off?
Yes, I'm gonna see if I can get them on video there. Hold on. Let's see, we have... Okay, there we go. So Hudson Valley Homestead is...
Harlem.
From Harlem Valley.
Harlem.
Sorry, Harlem Valley.
Quite a slip. We feel sensitive about.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So Harlem Valley Homestead is requesting a sales tax mortgage and a standard 10-year pilot from the IDA to assist them in developing an integrated hotel resort on approximately 250 acres in the town of Dover. The project concept is based on farm life, which will entail the construction of a hotel building with 48 rooms and sustainably built, designed and built conference cabins, a conference facility, and other recreational amenities. They hope to break ground later this year and complete construction in the fall of 2027. So with that, I will turn that over to Josh and Rich to present more. And I believe we have a presentation for yours. So Peter, if you can pop up the presentation? Just a minute. There we go.
Great, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Again, I'm Richard Sandor. I'm from the firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader. The White Plains office, not the Fishkill office. And we've been representing Harlem Valley Homestead now with, with all of their approvals and, which are in place. And as was already mentioned, we're talking to the board today for this approximately, give or take $100, $49 million project for a sales tax pilot and mortgage tax exemption. And with that very brief introduction, I'm gonna hand it over to one of the co-founders of the project, Josh.
Thank you, Rich. Thanks for having us here, everyone. I can give a quick background on the project and how it came to be in our community, and then just walk through some of the details and open up to questions. So my background is all in food and farming, not in development or hotels. But we have great partners who fill in a lot of those skills. And I spent my whole life really helping people connect to land and through various institutions and places. We've helped build the Hudson Valley University and also helped restore U.S. Home Gardens near here and land an organization called Slow Food USA for years, all around helping people understand how what we eat and how we relate to place is connected and important. I live in Wingdale, New York, which is a hamlet of Dover. Dover is one of the poorest towns in our county, but also one of the most beautiful and rich in natural resources, extraordinary farms, the Appalachian Trail, Ten Mile River. But it's a place that has lost a lot of jobs, particularly when the psychiatric ward there had 5,000 jobs closed in the 90s. And I love it there, very dear to my heart. I'm very embedded in the community there. Years and years ago, 12 years ago, I had a party at my house and I invited everyone I knew to help plant the garden, because I knew a lot of people who wanted to learn how to farm. And I thought maybe a dozen people would come. But we had 65 people show up. There were 35 tents in my yard. And I thought, what is going on here? And then it became a monthly party. And friends and neighbors, particularly one friend, Evan Van Hook, who sits on, who chairs the Conservation Advisory Committee and was Honeywell CSO, big deal in conservation. I said, you should turn this into a business. We should have, we should have a conservation-based economic development in Dover. Because if we have businesses that, whose business is based on taking care of the place, the place will be protected. And that is probably the best way to protect the place and also develop our economy here. If we don't do that, there are other projects that were, in some ways, maybe it's not as sustainable. It could hurt our community and degrade its value over time. This is important, especially in rural community. I told him he was nuts. And I said, I can do this in a business. I said, this is my front yard, you know, this doesn't make sense. But then this very beautiful farm just down the road, one on the market, had no easements on it, developable land, land that we all love. And I came back and I said, we could turn this into a place where we could bring people onto land, have them experience what it is to be in a rural setting, and also create viability for the farm long-term in hospitality and food and beverage component. It was very hard to make farming work financially for a lot of reasons that are complex. We've lost a lot of farms. And an old timer in our community told me that there used to be 16 of their farms in Dover, and now there are probably 16 in the whole capitol. And so finding ways to make farms viable is really important. And a lot of that has to do with diversifying revenue streams on them and getting compensated not just for growing ingredients, but for experiences and so forth. So brought in a wonderful capital partner who I work with, Michael Armilio. And we've been developing this project. We can run to the next slide. And we have a working farm now. I don't know if I can control it.
Yep, there we go.
Okay, there we go. So 250 working acres. We grow beef, cattle, and pastured pork and so on. The goal is to have actually 42 cabins on the property, not 48. And renovating barns and buildings and new construction to support having guest services like dining and events and a spa recreation and a lot of education onsite, like a lot of immersive educational programs. It's not just a sort of resort, but it's a place where people can really live into the experience of cooking with fire on the farm or helping to collect eggs, helping to move cows, all that good stuff. Go to the next slide. We have this motto that we come back to, which is a line from a Wendell Berry poem. What we need is here. We try to have that embed everything we do. So our experiences for guests, the way we farm, the way we build, all come from the place, and that's really important. We believe that sharing work in food is a really good way to build connection to place. And that when you don't have a connection to place, it's hard to be a good environmental steward, and it's hard to take care of each other. So we wanna rebuild that foundation for folks. And that's important to us for mission reasons. We're not just bottom-line driven. We really wanna kind of have this place be something that changes people's perspective when they're there. And go to the next slide. So yeah, we have diversified farm production here. Everything from pastured beef to veg to honeybees. We've done mushrooms, a bunch of other, good food comes to the farm. We sell it at farmers' market and wholesale restaurants and also onsite to local community members. And we run a lot of educational programs for folks in our community, foraging and beekeeping and basket weaving and things like that. And that's also helping us develop what our programs will be when the hospitality venues open. Go to the next slide. So sustainability really matters to us, both in the way we farm, but also in the way we plan our development. Preserved wildlife corridors, staying away from wetlands, choosing building materials, and also systems for even cooling carefully. So does gender and racial equity. It's something that I think is really, really important to us and really important to my partners. They've developed some really innovative stuff around this in other businesses they do. They have a whole due diligence program around gender equity and racial diversity. And so they're really fantastic in supporting us that way and making sure that our hiring practices really reflect that as well. Also, in our community, just developing the economy is an equity question because of our background. We've done a lot of community outreach. We start our summer camps. We give food to the Center of Compassion, which is a food bank. We've worked with cooperative extensions, Pudman and Duchess, both with like 4H programs. But then also, there's a grant program that buys local food and gets it into low-income communities. So working a lot with those groups on that. And then also on the conservation side, we're very closely partnered with the Usatonic Valley Association, which we're in the Usatonic Valley, not the Hudson Valley in terms of the watershed. So we have a bunch of plantings on in partnership with them and riparian zones and so forth. And those collaborations are helping us build very strong community connections. We applied to ESD for a grant and I got a call from the grant writer saying, enough with the letters of support, we're good. Never had this problem before, but it's. So we have very strong community connections, which we love. And part of it comes from the fact that we really live in the community. We're not coming from outside. Go to the next slide. So the project itself involves a lot of renovation, almost 15,000 square feet of existing buildings, very few demolitions. There's some old pole barns that are coming down and some old worker housing and a milkhouse that are quite rotten and in bad repair that are coming down. But the historic barns are getting restored, the historic farmhouse are all getting restored. And then about 71,000 square feet of new construction, so 42 lodging, guest units, shared facilities like food and beverage wellness and also space for events. And then quite a bit of farm infrastructure as well, which wasn't really governed by the entitlement process. We can do that as of right. We have a couple of greenhouses, we're building more. There's also like a wash pack facility we need to build out and an animal wintering barn as well. Go to the next slide. Actually, before, well, yeah, that's good. That's fine. We commissioned a study with Camoyne Associates that I think many of you probably know. They were fantastic to work with, just to understand what the impact of doing this project would be. Like there would be somewhere between 70 and 90 jobs, depending on if you're counting direct jobs induced or the ones that we already have, but probably 70 new jobs that we're creating and around almost $10 million, $9.4 million in sales just in the town of Dover. If you go to the next slide, it'll show Duchess, which grows a little bit, again, because of indirect and induced jobs, up to 118. Sales go up to 13 million five. And if you go to the next slide, it shows a whole bit of Hudson region, which we looked at for ESD and you can see that grows a bit more. And go to the next, the next slide. And I think that's going to be it. Yeah. So really appreciate this. And I just want to say like as a farm person and somebody who really cares about farm viability and has come to this project, not just to help save this farm, but also to make sure that people have experiences that ground them in farming in a way that makes them advocates for it. And looking at how hard this business is to run, running the farm right now without this business is crazy. We shouldn't be doing it, but we believe in it. Once the hospitality stuff comes in, it'll start to work, but it is not, it's a labor of love and passion and also because we really care about this community we live in. And especially looking at escalating costs post-COVID and the length of time it's taken to get our entitlements, the kinds of programs you run like really make a difference. And I really appreciate you hearing us out and can help us make this possible. So thank you.
I appreciate a farm project finally coming in. But because, you know, I think that we often talk about the, you know, the fabric of Duchess County is a place to live. And so it's important that, I think the challenge, the economic challenge of surviving here as a business is substantial. So this is interesting. And I think that just getting through our process is just a very baby step in surviving economically.
The way Fishkill Farms has done, what it's done has been an inspiration and it's incredible what you're able to pull off there. So thank you.
So the existing farm is a for-profit venture?
Yeah, theoretically. It starts it as one, yes.
It's a private business?
Yes, it's a private business and it generates substantial revenue, but it's very hard to do that and take care of people and animals and the land well and actually have it be profitable. But yeah, it has substantial revenue and it's a for-profit business.
I made a note of a comment that you had, which was compensation for experience.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of the ways that you seek to, to get there is, and which, which I always found interesting. I had a friend who had a, was a dairy farm in their family in New Hampshire and they had to stop dairy farming, just, but one of the things that they said to me was that they constantly got calls out of the blue from people from New York City saying, we'll come up and stay the weekend on your farm and help you build fences, whatever you want. They want to experience that dirt in their hands. And they said, you know, they just didn't have a viable way to do that, right? Legally worried about risk and all that. But it sounds like that's what you're trying to tap into is people wanting to, to have that experience and actually pay to, to help.
Yes. The hunger for it is extraordinary.
Then the train line will definitely help with the New York City, the Harlem Valley, Metro North. I mean, like you see Beacon and Cole Springs at weekends to ferry them up.
Do you have any plans for any, so I noticed that the average wage is 38,000, which maybe in the Dover area, that's, that is a substantial wage. I don't know, but I'm curious about that. But it is within the scope of cost of living. 38,000 is not very much. Do you have any, first of all, are those workers going to have health insurance as part of their compensation?
That's a really good question. So we haven't fully built out exactly what could be.
Okay.
I think 38,000 will likely be low and probably comes from the early ESD work and some times gone by since then. I also think it's very, there's a big spread within the organization because a lot of the workers are, are going to be seasonal on the farm.
I see.
And the range of that to like a housekeeping director, to a general manager is going to be a widespread and also the number of hours and contact. Yeah, we have plans to have health insurance across the board and in some cases worker housing.
Well, that's what's my next question was, is there any availability of housing for some of the staff? I mean, obviously the seasonal is, is difficult, but for some of the people that may be on the lower end of the salary range where housing on the farm would be a great benefit to them.
Yes.
Speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I mean, one thing that we have been doing is looking for houses that are proximate, sometimes in walking distance to the farm, finding them. And then it's actually great for some people who want to be mobile, especially in this housing market where we've been able to lease those properties back to owners so they can stay there as long as they want. And then when they do want to move, they have cash to move. And there've been a few people who've been interested in moving on their own. They've approached us and then those houses become available to our workers. So like our crops lead right now lives within walking distance of the farm with his partner there and she and he are quite happy with it. They're, they probably wouldn't have been able to take the job and move without that. So we're looking for opportunities to do that. Those houses and those plans aren't sort of part of our development footprint. We're more looking at existing because they're still expensive and there's some lower cost housing stock that's proximate to us. That's basically been our strategy, but we really want to, yeah, lean into that.
But it's not a component of the project as you described it?
Yeah. Yeah, we looked at building worker housing on the property. It increased the footprint quite a bit and the cost of building, it looked like the cost of building housing on our property was less than the cost of buying adjacent properties with houses already built. And then, which speaks to a number of, I think, interesting issues, but yeah, so that was the move we started making. Good question.
So one of our jobs is the, but without this question. And so, you know, what is, what is your, as you said, I mean, I can hear from your presentation, from you personally, obviously making a huge profit margin is not something that you expect, but you know, what is a profit margin that you hope to achieve? And if we didn't grant you these benefits, how would it affect the project? How would, if we just said flat out, no, we don't think it's worthy, you know, would this project proceed or what would happen?
I think there's a, but for this, it would not. Because at the end of the day, I think what you were hearing in the presentation is, at the end of the day, you know, right now with the limited, if any, profits that they make, let alone with the financing that they're going to have to go through, it's going to be quite some time before they turn a profit. And, and without these benefits, I don't think any of the project folks thinks that it's a viable, profitable project. So.
You know, which is, if you don't. It's been very clear, like we've had fantastic partners who are willing to do, who are willing to put dollars in that is, that are not going to be the highest return on their dollars, but it doesn't make them insane. And they basically said, this has to watch its own face. It can't be a philanthropic sucking sound. And part of how we got together was actually we're looking at how can their philanthropic dollars and their investment dollars begin to line up so that their investments both have a return and also, and also are value aligned? And this investment was made with that understanding. And so if it doesn't become that, it will not happen.
They can't make a philanthropic contribution.
Yeah, it's just not going to be that. And so we have to find a way to make it watch its own face. And the other thing that has happened, I mentioned this before, is the escalating costs combined with the length of the entitlement process in New York State, combined also with COVID pricing and the need to do some offsite improvements for the town in order, frankly, to move entitlement process forward, just pushed, 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 which has made it challenging at this point.
Yeah, and I'll just add in, I'm a transaction guy. I'm not a land use approval person. But when I first started working with Josh almost two years ago to now, and I looked down at the budget and I remembered what the budget was, I was, my eyes popped out of my head because he's right. I mean, the, the economy has flipped on its head, the cost, the inflation, the time, and I got to figure out a way to get the loan done. So, yeah.
Town and schools, have they indicated support for the project?
So because they're asking for standards, we don't, we don't require it.
My apologies.
But I do believe the school district and the town have been supportive of this project.
In large, we've had incredible support. I mean, just there's, you know, we have the school kids over all the time. We have good relationships with the school. We have great relationships with the town. Just like very.
And the beauty for the school district is not adding any students.
That frustrates me to the end because personally I think they should be excited about adding students and I don't understand why there's a declining enrollment school programs that say we don't want more kids. I can't wrap my head around that.
But on the pilot though.
Yes.
The town is supportive of the pilot and the school district?
Well, it's because it's a uniform pilot, they've argued that the structure is in place where they don't need to approve of it.
They don't need to approve.
I'd like to know all the same.
Yeah, what's their, be their feelings?
Right. Every, everybody at the town and the school district has been supportive. We haven't gone back to them for the sake of getting a letter of support or anything. If you're honest to, we're happy to, but.
Well, I think that Sarah, maybe because we have new board members and we all need to be refreshed. When we, when people come for a modified pilot, we require the district and the town to notify us, but when it's the standard, do we still ask for that?
No, so, so our, so our policy, our policy, the Duchess County IDA policy is that the 10-year standard pilot is, does not require a formal approval from the town or school district because this, we follow the state's 485B, which has been approved, you had back in the 80s or something like that. And you had to opt out if you didn't want that 45B. So, so that is kind of as of right. If they are going to ask for deviation in our pilot, whether that is length of time, percentages or whatever, then we will ask the, the taxing jurisdiction, the effective taxing jurisdictions for their consent, which is different from their approval.
Right. And so we have, and we've been dealing with so many of those deviated, it's almost like, I think we got conditioned to asking for it.
Yes.
And it's important to note that every year you adopt your uniform tax exemption policy and the public and the school districts and the towns are all invited to comment on it. And we never have had any comments on our standard pilots and our stand, and our uniform tax exemption policy.
May I just ask?
Yes.
So would the town be, have knowledge that they are seeking this pilot? Does the town know it so they could have sent a letter of, of non-support if they felt that they didn't want it? Is that accurate?
So what will happen is, so after the, if, if the board chooses to approve the preliminary approval, we actually send formal notification to the town and school district that this project is asking for these benefits. And then they are welcome to either, you know, submit written comments or come to the public hearing and make comments about the project, either for or against. And yeah, and that's how the board will know. But I also say as practice too, is I often tell the, you know, I tell the applicant or I will talk to the municipality and just let them know that we are looking, you know, project has submitted an application looking for these benefits that might affect them and just, you know, so that they are well aware that these projects are.
And if there was, if there was any type of objections, we would, we would certainly, and we've, I don't think we've been in this situation in a long time where we approve something that a municipality opposed, whether it was a uniform pilot or a deviated pilot. And I believe the last one was the gap.
Yeah, gap is the only one.
Many years ago when we, we went ahead and again, none of us were part of it, but this organization went ahead despite the opposition of the Fishkill.
Yeah.
And I think that's why it's important for us to understand.
Correct.
This is the answer.
I just wanted to note two things in here. So one is in the preliminary resolution for any project, but also specifically for this one, there's language in there stating that we're authorizing the agency to schedule the public hearing, to send formal notice to the chief executive officer of all of the taxing jurisdictions and, and then hold the public hearing in the municipality where the project is located. And also we're required to make a secret determination. And as part of that, we look at the, who the lead agency was. And this has gone through the planning board process and received all of the environmental approvals. So that's included in here as well. So it does have the, you know, it's gone through the process with the planning board.
So Mark, I just want to make sure, are you comfortable with what you heard?
Absolutely.
Yeah. No, and again, I encourage us all to ask these questions.
Yeah, the first year taxes, I mean, 265 from 43,000.
Despite the.
165,000.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Ag exemption right now, probably.
Yeah, there's ag exemption now and there's a, questions to sort out about, well, that pasture is under ag, like how do we also line up with, but I think that's, and we're in the process of figuring out right now.
Yeah.
So actually, can I just stand on that a bit? So with ag assessment, you're committed to five or eight years of keeping that land in agriculture on a rolling basis. So if you decide that you actually want to use that land for some form of non-agricultural use, you're going to have to refund the taxes that you've saved.
And be paying a non-ag tax moving forward.
Likewise. So that's their calculation.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, that's something we're working on is how those, how those uses overlap going forward.
Okay, so today, again, we have new board member and just to make sure we all, and I, I'm going to say it and sometimes Sarah corrects me, but moving forward, what, what we're saying here is we want to preliminarily approve what they've submitted to us, subject to more work, public hearing and Sarah, you know, reaching out. And based on that, if all of that, how that goes, we, it will be back before us for final approval with all of that documentation. And, you know, we have the right at that point to approve or not approve based on the, the public hearing comments and any other things that come before us. So this is just granting approval to say that so far that they have fulfilled their obligations and the applications and that we think that it's worthy of that, that next step. Any other questions?
Could, could, we have just a real brief understanding of the sort of role and relationship of Nona's Garden and Anna's Rest?
Yes. Yeah, they're, they're essentially holding, they're, they're parent corporations and holding companies. So all the, all the three entities are owned by the same parties, which is actually a couple series of LLCs above them, but for liability and, and tax purposes, to be honest with you, we've, we've created two holding companies and Harlem Valley Homestead will be the operating company that will run the project.
Good.
Yeah.
Very much.
And do you see this as a 12-month a year project? Like I know farming is obviously more difficult in the winter, but there's still opportunities for farming in the winter. So do you anticipate this being a 12-month, you know, yearly?
We do, we do. It's a really good question though.
Yeah, beef and.
Part because of the animals, but then we also have a wonderful greenhouse system, a completely heated greenhouse, but we produce greens all winter and then indoor mushroom operation that we're not doing right now, but we'll turn back on once we're open. So there's a lot that will happen in the winter as well, but it will, it will change.
There's not a dairy component to this.
There is not, no.
Okay.
Because we're only this insane, not this insane. Dairy, dairy's extra hard.
Yes, yeah. But you know, from a, from a agritourism perspective, you know, the whole, that kind of.
The thing is, there's a wonderful dairy down the road from us called Brookby Farm and we work closely with them and they're, they've been great partners. They make hay for us and we send produce there and they send stuff to us. And so we let them suffer dairy and they've, they've been doing it six generations, I think going on seven, so.
You have a good network of farms out there that are all doing a little bit different things. And so that's great. Can you talk to me about the event space that you're thinking about and conference space? What does that look like and how do you see using it?
So we have an area called the, what we call for now the Homestead House, which is where most of the food and beverage is served. And then there's an area adjacent to, it hosts like up to 200-person events. And the town. And the town, um, we agreed with the town to cap two hundred person events to eighteen years so that it's not, um, we never had it intended to be that because um, we don't wanna kind of be a wedding farm, honestly. That's not the business we wanna run for a lot of reasons, but mostly for mission reasons. Um, but we do think there's opportunities to have like a great harvest festival kind of things. We could do weddings that are very focused on the farm with the right couple. Um, and uh, other conferences and events, things like that. Um, so there's opportunity to do that, but I think, we think most of what we'll do will be fitting within the forty-two overnight spaces we have. So not having a lot of offsite guests coming for big events as much as we have.
What did you say about eighteen years? I'm sorry, did?
Oh, e- eighteen uh, large events per year.
Oh, okay.
So we're capped, so it, which was easy for us to say because we don't think we would wanna do eighteen events, large events a year anyways.
A combination of weddings and your own events.
It's hard, yeah.
And, and Cornell Cooperative Extension, I was working with them to try to do a farm tour and they couldn't get the buses in their budget this year because transportation costs are enormated. But for future um, barn tours and farm tours and things like that for people, I think that would be a great venue for that.
Absolutely, absolutely. The barns are great. And then also we're looking at having a shuttle either at the Puna, we work with the local, um, there's a wonderful, small local taxi company so that we could get people from the train station to us.
That's really, really important.
Five minutes away, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, based on what we've heard, is anybody willing to make a motion to approve this preliminary resolution?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, would somebody be willing to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, Jasmine, will you please take a roll call vote on the approval of the preliminary resolution?
Mark Doral?
Approved.
Amy Bonideri?
Approved.
Jamie Cole?
Approved.
Deidre Houston?
Approved, indeed.
Approved. Gentlemen, we look forward to hearing the results of the public hearing and any other matters, but um, we have approved your preliminary resolution.
Thank you very much for your time.
Really appreciate it all, thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right, um.
This is our opportunity.
Okay.
Sorry to hear.
Okay, thanks. So.
I even wrote into this.
I know. So next on the agenda is the um, is NRI Hyde Park LLC. They are the applicant that proposes to construct a um, a resort hotel, uh, the campuses of the culinary. And um, I will just bring it over here and represent it on uh, screen as well as a person here, so.
Sure, so um, it looks like everybody's hard at work filling out their uh, their board evaluation forms, but just to let everybody know, there is one for the prior project that we just approved. You can sign that, as well as there will be one based on the outcome of the uh, the project they were about to discuss. Um, so make sure that you complete those and get them to Jasmine.
All right.
Okay.
We just have them on screen.
Okay.
So uh, this morning, we have Michael Zarin and Kate Roberts. They are from uh, Zarin and Zarin? Uh, um, the, Zarin and.
Steinmetz.
Steinmetz, Steinmetz. Zarin Steinmetz. Um, uh, um, they are counsel to NRI. Um, so uh, just a brief introduction of the project is the applicant uh, uh, is requesting sales tax, mortgage tax exemption and a deviated pilot um, for the construction of um, uh, a, uh, a uh, low-rise hotel building with villas, leasehold villas, a restaurant, spa and other recreational amenities on the campus of the Culinary Institute of America in the town of Hyde Park. They hope to break ground uh, later this year and complete construction in March of twenty-twenty-seven. And there, I uh, typo, the occupancy is not March of twenty-twenty-four, but March of twenty-twenty-seven um, there. So uh, they plan to invest over two hundred and fifty million, uh, fifty, yeah, over two hundred and fifty million dollars and create um, a hundred and seventy FTEs. So with us this morning, again, is Michael Zarin and Kate Roberts, who can talk more in detail of the project.
All right, well, thank you, Sarah. Uh, good morning. Uh, I apologize for not being there in person and being on Zoom. Um, I'm on vacation this week with my family, so um, I hope, I hope this works uh, for you. Uh, we do have a PowerPoint presentation that Sarah asked us to reintroduce the project. Based on the maybe new members and others who haven't, haven't heard about it, so.
Michael, I need, I need the, whoever's the host to allow me to screen share if possible.
Kate, I'm not there yet. Give me two seconds and.
Apologies, give me a moment.
All right, in the meantime, I just, um, as Kate, as um, Sarah mentioned, this is an application of NRI Hyde Park LLC uh, for financial assistance uh, with respect to what we think is an exciting upscale, environmentally sustainable tourist destination hotel and resort uh, on twenty-one acres ground lease property from the CIA, north of the Marichika, the area that's undeveloped, was the subject of a hotel resort in two thousand and eleven that was approved, but never got off the ground for financial and other, other reasons. I've been before you previously, or our firm has, uh, with respect to the Asahi Shoes Osaka plant, so it's good to be back. And I think we, we all collaborated in what's uh, what has turned out, I think, be a really special project in the Saki. And this is pretty much right across the street, sharing the same intersection and will really bring another um, substantial and exciting element to the whole tourist destination for Hyde Park that's, that's, that's sort of occurring in this area. NRI, for those of you that don't know, is a global expertise real estate hospitality uh, group. They have about six billion dollars of completed projects. They have a Relais Chateau, uh, well-known uh, resort uh, in Costa Rica called the Chameleon. Do a lot of work in Florida and uh, this is their first entree into the uh, northeast. And as Sarah mentioned, this is a, a two hundred and fifty million dollar plus um, investment. Um, and seeking, the applicant is seeking the fifteen-year deviated pilot, the mortgage tax and sales tax exemption. Um, that, that translates into about eight million dollars in savings and I'll address the but-for uh, criteria uh, after the slide. Uh, but it will also, the project should generate approximately twenty-one million dollars plus during the, during the term of the uh, of the pilot uh, in tax benefits for the um, for the effective taxing jurisdictions. Recently, uh, the project received its uh, site plan approval. Previously, we had a substantial net debt. We've been before the Hyde Park Planning Board for over two years, um, going through a very extensive substantive, I think, high-quality, frankly, um, secret process, um, that are a great job. They have a, a real strong infrastructure of um, professionals um, uh, on their staff and in-house and, and uh, that was a coordinated secret review. Uh, we recently received conditional site fin, site plan approval with forty-seven conditions. Um, and those conditions were literally satisfied last week. Various consultants in the town signed off on. And the final site plan is being um, circulated as we speak for a signature for final site plan approval. That, at that time, we'll be ready to begin um, extensive site work. And then we uh, will be filing, we already have them prepared our building permits for the first phase of the project. We've, uh, when I get into and show you the site plan, the short presentation, we've had approvals from the DC, from the Department of Health, from DOT, from SHPO, from EDS, uh, from the FDR Estate, uh, from the F, um, and alike. And it's been, it's been quite a process, but I think we've come up with a, a, a pretty, a pretty exciting project. Um, town board, you have a letter of support in your file for the um, for the pilot, for the deviated pilot. And we've also um, have had extensive um, consultation with this school district, including a number of Board of Ed meetings. And signed a, um, or agreed upon and, and we, we put our signature on it. And um, tomorrow, the uh, school, school district is hopefully formally finally approving a community benefit agreement with the school district. Uh, that will include a number of scholarships, student scholarships and a mentoring career advisement program. And uh, that agreement has been finalized and um, in support of the school district supporting the uh, the deviated pilot. So with that said, maybe I could just give you a, a better description of the project if I just quickly go through this PowerPoint. Um, so, um, oh, great, great. I am completely technically incapable of doing what Kate's doing. Um, okay, so this is the site plan. This was the, this is the approved site plan. As I said before, the area you see is a twenty-one point five acre uh, ground leased area from, from the CIA. And the ground lease is ninety-nine years plus extensions and somewhat in perpetuity. Uh, there is some area um, outside that little red thing, some area in the access road that will be pursuant to easements as opposed to the ground lease. But we, we have a master ground lease uh, with the CIA that's been entered into and, and in effect. So if you follow the western portion of the site, and I'll, I have more renderings and the like, that'll give you more of a, a feel for what this looks like. But that consists of the um, eighteen guest rooms in a lower-rise hotel. This is a two-story hotel. We wanted to keep it low-rise, low-mass, um, and, and that type of hospitality feel. There's also, you can see, there's twenty-nine rental villas um, surrounding to the south. Um, there's also um, treehouse villas in the uh, north, northwestern corner. There's a hearth building in, that has reception, lobby, bars, some retail and a hundred, a hundred fifty-seat restaurant. Um, there's also a, a building called Hilltop Amenities at the highest site uh, that will be for wine and tasting and, and, and just, you'll see a rendering of that. And then there's a full spa and wellness center with uh, pool and, and, and other wellness public amenities, which will be open to also the general public as the restaurant, obviously, and, and the spa and the like. Uh, there's also uh, an event barn, about a sixteen thousand square foot event barn that will be for um, larger events, weddings and, and so forth. And we have arrangements with the CIA to do all the full parking and, and all the parking for that, that area will be done by valet parking. So that we've avoided any surface parking and really have tried to minimize that. Um, when you go now to the western part of the site, those are what's called leasehold villas. This was a s, a special um, recently, the town board um, modified the zoning to create what's called the St. Andrews because the zoning for this site is special to the CIA was done, you know, decades ago, called the St. Andrews District was created to allow for this type of lodging and conference center and hotel and resort, which, which they wanted to have for a long time. These villas will be leasehold um, villas that will be uh, the, the land, the land and the structure will be owned by individuals. Um, however, um, they will be part of the resort and they will be, all the facilities will be maintained uh, by the resort. They will be members of the resort and pays ma, and management fees and resort fees to participate mandatory. It's part of the experience, part of the um, and they will be part of the resort and have full access to all the amenities. They also, when they're not occupied by the owner, uh, they must be in a mandatory rental program. Uh, that will be, create transient use. Um, and they cannot by, by statute, they cannot be a primary residence for any of the owners. Um, so it's a, it, 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 we had to create this sort of um, new product, if you might. Was you, the CIA would only lease the land to us, so under New York state law, you can't do condominium, but leasehold property. And you have the local zoning, which is for transient use, and so we've created these transient um, buildings. Um, but as I said, these will be, these are totally integrated into the resort. The facilities manager will be responsible for all the utilities for these, all the landscaping, all the uh, enforcement of um, a whole list of covenants that, that uh, will be in effect to maintain the natural environment around there and to limit the amount of any outdoor uh, use um, to the resorts. We really wanna keep it in a natural state. Um, the, the yards cannot have fire pits, for example, or, or lawn furniture, that type of thing. Um, so these will be under the management and, and control of the resort and the facilities manager of the resort. So, and then you have the, the entrance road, as you see, which will have a uh, a very uh, gatehouse and, and a number of other amenities that, that come off of St. Andrews at the intersection with Saki facility. And we're doing a, a series of approved DOT um, improvements that have, that we've gotten full approval for. So that's the, oh, I should say also that I think significant part of this, you can see trails and a lot of green maintained space. Uh, that is the Winnicke Constitution in the middle there. Uh, and we have easements and, and work very closely with them uh, to create and to um, activate that area with public trails. And we will ha, we have already entered into and recorded um, a public trail easement so that the public can really start using the trails that connect to the FDR trails. Uh, also seen at Hudson, we have a working relationship and consent with them for an easement they have in the western part of the site uh, with respect to Hudson River and alike. Um, and so those are a major part of the project to create the outdoor experience, create trails and, and, and the like, and they will connect to the CIA and connect to the FDR and try to maintain that, that gateway. Um, so, uh, Greenway, I'm sorry, that Greenway. Um, so, so um, that's, that's the site plan. Maybe I could just quickly take you through um, just a little bit of more detailing and get a sense and feel. Um, this is just um, Gensler Associates have been the architects here. They really are world-renowned, as some of you may know, for doing some very, very um, special types of architecture. And a big part of this project is the design, the architecture, but it's also, the, the theme of the resort is gonna be an immersive culinary experience, obviously, being, you know, related to the CIA, so there's gonna be a significant amount of joint programming with the CIA. Uh, using it for educational purposes, using it for special cooking classes and all different types of joint events. Um, as well as you'll see, you know, some, some type of onsite gardening, special gardening facilities and other hut, maintaining the Hudson Valley, you know, brand experience. I mean, that's what it's all about. And that, you know, the na, the architecture is very nature, landscape centric, as you'll, as you'll see in some of the, the renderings. That's been the whole theme and, and, you know, tremendous amount of work has gone into the design, architecture. That's what NRI is sort of known for. So, next please, Kate. Um, lot of sustainable initiatives uh, throughout, um, all different types of, of photo panel. Uh photo panels and rain border harvesting and vegetative roofs. Uh, that was a big part of the. Of the offering of the architecture here to create a number of sustainable initiatives. Um, next, Kate. Um, also uh important just for the whole maintenance of this area and because it really is built into a. Sensitive environmental area that has undergone significant study, I can assure you. Um, is there's a lot of uh natural stormwater, best practices, planters, green roofs. Underground sister and grass wells. You know, different types of sand filters, bio retention ponds, rain gardens and the like. So that's. That's been something that we've worked uh very closely with the uh planning board and their consultants and our con- our consultant team. That's been pretty robust, as you can see in the, in the margin. Next, please, Kate. Um, this gives you a feel for just of the sense and of some of the spaces. Again, you know, we. Uh, worked again very closely with the High Park Planning Board and trying to create something that resembled a number of the. Um, architecture in the area as well as some of the CIA and just and and just captured a. Uh, a very sort of integrated, you know, uh natural and used the natural photography and like. So you see the leasehold villas, some of the guest rooms, the cabins, the sort of the, uh, the. Treehouse cabins, the restaurants, uh bakeries, the Hilltop amenity building. Uh wellness center, the barn, the event barn in the bottom, teaching kitchens, onsite sort of. Um spaces that we're creating uh throughout uh that we've worked with Winnekee and and some of the other um. So that gives you just a sense of some of the architectural uh features. Next, please, Kate. And here you see just again some of the other greenhouse. There'll be a greenhouse. There'll be all different types of. Um, plantings, horticulture, um experiences that will be on the site. Um, and again, part of the whole brand and immersion. Immersive experience because that's, that's the term there. They're trying to brand and use this in a number of their um offerings and um. And then you can see the ench- when I said guardhouse, there's a, there's a rendering of what that's gonna look like. When you come off of Route Nine and and a long entrance driveway uh through the woods into the, into the resort. Next, Kate. And then this again gives you just a sense of feel for some of the villas and the architecture in the villas. And literally what the surroundings are gonna look like. And again. All the exterior aspects of this will be controlled by the resort and by the facilities manager. Uh, we have all types of built in documentation and agreements and transactional agreements. Um, and enforcement to maintain the, 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 the requirements. Uh covenants, requirements and the like. Next, Kate. And this is just um. Is it just some of the guest room villas? Again, some of the ones that circle under the western part. Um, that would be small bills and that's, that's been the trend that in hospitality creates smaller. More private, less mass, uh more integrated into the environment. That's been the. That's the trend in the hospitality that we've been trying to accomplish. And there's another, this, next slide, please, Kate. That's another sense of what some of the villas look like. Those are duplex attached. Patched villas and and it's more modern in the inside, as you can see. That's, that's been the sort of balance that. Um, NRI has tried to, it's a little more modern on the inside in some of the villas, but more, you know, has this mix of. Glass and wood on the outside, stone. Next, Kate. Here's the restaurant, just the rendering of, you know, a little bit of feel of what the restaurant will look like. Again, wood, stone, leather, great, just sort of. They use all the architectural terms, rugged, beauty, it's subtle. That's not my area. Um, next, Kate. And there'll be a lot of bakery, like I said, there'll be um a lot of the offerings and the culinary are gonna be. You know, shared and done onsite and and integrated with some of the educational at the, at the CIA and and. Um, trying to create this sort of connection with the guests too and a lot of that, that, that experience. And the next one is just a little feel for the Hilltop amen- amenity. And there's no, it says favorite distillery, but it's, there's no, there's no. This production on the site that is something that. We have, but that's the highest point of the, of the project site. So I have that amenity. And create a lot of outdoor space, a lot of integrating with the outdoor. This is, the next one is just give you a little sense of the, the spa and the wellness facility. And the pool, the indoor, and again, we will be open to the public. So that, that, I think. Hopefully, I, I hope that that gives you a, a, some sense of the, the feel and the, uh, of, of it. Um, if, as I mentioned, final site plan, um hopefully will be signed by the end of the week and then we will begin. Within what they call, some of you may be aware of, the Indiana Bat Window, where you can do tree cutting. Um, that, and we'll be doing extensive site work and tree cutting on the roads and utilities. As well as by December, we would like to begin the road improvements with the DOT and that's one of the reasons. We're hoping to have the um, uh, the IDA closing if, you know. Assuming that you support the project somewhat time in December because we'll start purchasing the materials and and. On the sales tax exemption and um starting on the, in earnest, the DOT uh construction. And then we hope to go vertical. Phase one will be the western buildings. Um, and um, and those we hope to be able to start in um the spring. Um, we, we have already done all the building permits and con- uh construction drawings. Um, necessary drawings, construction drawings. Um, and that will be, those will be filed as soon as the final site plan is approved. Now, we targeting October fifteen to file those with the, with the um. With the uh town, with the building, building inspector. So um again, this has been a tax exempt property for decades. Um. Uh, we will be paying um mark, you know, pursuant to the IDA assistance, but we'll, we'll be, be being assessed. Uh, on a market rate, on a construction cost basis plus land value. We worked that out with the town. Um, they're in term of the um, of the pilot. Um, and the uh, the, as I mentioned, or I said that I was the but four. Um, is, you can imagine, this has been a very expensive process. Project that types of things we're doing uh has required, continues to require, a lot of value engineering. To bring it within the two hundred mil- fifty million dollar plus budget. Um, the eight million dollars of um benefits that we would get under the fifteen year deviated. Um, would, would be significant in making this a viable and feasible project. Um, these types of projects, the scale and scope of these. Uh, take fifteen years to gain sufficient market penetration. Um, and, and the leasehold villa subleasing absorption. Uh, the same uh to get to a really stabilized uh financial position. Uh, the markets, as you know, are, the lending market, loan market, you know, has been rather chaotic. Um. So the first five years of the ramp up, ramp up is the largest financial pressure on the high interest construction financing. So that's. Something that, that, that propels the need for this. And then you have. To cover your operating costs while the revenue ramps up towards stabilization. So. Um, again, you know, we're um, this is the type of assistance that would really make this project feasible and and um. We continue to try to find ways to bring it to budget. It's a, it's a very, very expensive design. And it continues to go through design iterations that, you know. Put demands on us. So um, that's um, that's just the overview as, as um, um. Sarah mentioned before, we hope to, March first quarter of two thousand twenty seven uh be open. Um, and uh the opening will involve the west, will be, the hotel will be fully operating. Uh, by the time any of the leasehold villas are constructed. Oh, I should have mentioned, I, I did forget to mention, it's important. Is that the leasehold villas um will be, the construction is funded by the owner pursuant to their own mortgage. So one of the things we did work with staff of, of the agency that the um. Mortgage and sales tax will, the mortgage and sales. Uh, costs or revenue uh costs and for the leasehold villas will not, are not included. In the um, in the application for financial assistance. That's, that's a, I believe, approximately twenty. Twenty eight million dollars to be done. That's not in the, not in the application. So um. Any, I'm sure you have questions or comments. Um, that's, that's, that's our overview. Thank you for your. Consideration and hopeful, you know, assistance and and uh it's been great working with Sarah and your staff and and um. You know, we look forward to continuing this partnership, so.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I think I'm gonna say the right balance of detail and and not detail. Because you can tell this is a huge and very extensive process to get to this point. Um. As chair, my preliminary comment is that, you know, one thing I know about the Hyde Park area is the large amount of untaxed. Uh, land there and and property with all of the not for profits and government entities there. So. I know that it is a desire of the, of the town to, to get more of their, their land on the tax rolls. And this certainly is a, is a good uh project when it comes to that. Um, I'm gonna give you a couple of questions and then we'll open it up to others as well. Um, first one being water and sewer. What are you doing on that?
So we've had a sewer agreement, a sewer tenancy agreement. Uh, with the um town of Poughkeepsie and Peekskill that's been signed and in place.
And Peekskill?
Uh, Poughkeepsie, I'm sorry.
Town of Poughkeepsie only.
Yes, you know, and, and we have one in Alaska for the last.
So it's with the town of Poughkeepsie?
It's, it's, yes, it's with town. That's all been signed, voted on. That's been in effect for years. We've been making. Option payments during that. We have a, we have. Um, and we also are using some of the CIA's allocation and they've increased, they, they've increased the allocation. Uh, for the project to the CIA. So we're, we're, we're within that, that ceiling and. Been fully voted upon and in effect for a number of years.
How are you gonna get it to the town of Poughkeepsie lift station?
It, 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 it hooks into one of the sewer mains um that, one of the pumps that come off of the CIA and will be. Expanding the, the capacity of those, those piping and to bring it, bring it into that. Uh, we'll be using and hooking into the CIA system.
Okay. Um, next question. You talked about the non-primary residences, which are. This, generally, this project is on a land lease, but you mentioned that that part of it, the property underneath the. Non-primary residence homes will be owned by the resident?
No, no, and that, I, I, I.
So I guess, let me re-
Have until, can you stay here until like?
So the question is, and maybe you, maybe you try to do it as best you can. I guess my real question is, what is the structure of ownership of those units? Is it condos? Is it?
It can't, it can't, it can't be condos because, like I said before, New York state law prohibits condos on.
Sure.
Ground leased areas. So what the structure will be is that the, we will. We will sell to owners. We will enter into, we will enter into sub-ground leases with the owners. For ninety nine years plus twenty five year renewals. Uh, so they are purchasing essentially. A ground leased leasehold interest in those, in the, in that lot. Um, we will then uh, we will work with them. They will, we have a number of offerings on the, on the, on the villas that you saw. We will enter into construction almost, almost sort of like uh a. Norm, a sort of a subdivision where we will construct the building. Uh, but they will have the more, they will have the mortgage, the owner will have the mortgage on that, on that villa. But, and that, the land will, it's a leasehold, will, is ground leased from the CIA.
Okay. Um, and um. Okay, and the mandatory rental program, what is the maximum amount of time that a owner can occupy then?
Okay, that's a great question. Um, so. We don't have a max time. We originally had a certain percentage of time.
Yes.
Maximum ownership.
I remember that.
The, the lenders. Said, and the mark piece, the lender said, we will not finance that. We can't fund that.
Okay.
Um, so we went back to the town board and the town board. Uh, passed a zoning text amendment to eliminate the cat, but to create a. Something called the St. Andrews Leasehold Villa, which was now gonna be a transient use. That laid out the criteria, meaning the main criteria is it couldn't be a prime, quote unquote, legal primary residence. Primary residence is defined by the IRS and they have a whole lot of. You know, they do the same thing. It can not be your main, your main um residence. Um. And we will enforce that and we will keep the amount of time that people are at and keep track of that and. Make sure that it's not primary in their ta- tax returns if necessary and their. And their licenses and all the same indecia that the IRS uses to enforce that. Um.
Okay.
And, and then when they're not occupying it. It's mandatorily must be in a rental program.
Yes.
That's very important to us and we have, we share an incentive to enforce that. Because obviously we get a percentage of the rental, which is a critical line item in our revenue performance.
Got it. Um, other questions from board members?
I'm, I'm just curious, how many leasehold villas you, are you proposing? I didn't see the number of them in your proposal.
There's, I believe, um, there's fifty seven, I believe, total.
And can you just offer the um average sales price of these leasehold villas and also what your proposed membership fees will be for these leasehold villas?
You know, I don't, I don't have, I'd have to get back to you on the membership fee to the res- the resort. Um. And, and the villas, I think, are gonna run anywhere from probably a million to two million. That, that, they're not, they're not inexpensive. Depending on size, they come in, they come in different sizes, number of bedrooms.
I'm good for now.
So in the um understanding, the, the leasehold capacity, component and the fact that the, the cost of. Constructing these villas is being removed from the application. However, what is the um infrastructure cost that applies to supporting those villas? And how is that separated from? And how is that separated from the application?
So, so all, all, I, I don't think, I don't think we broke down the, the infrastructure cost. I'll have to go check that per the villas because a lot of that is shared resort. The entrance road, for example, um, is that they use the same, they use the same entrance road. So the entrance road serves all the villas. You, you have, um, you have a lot of the stormwater retention is shared. So, you know, so I, I don't think, I'd have to get back to you on what the, what the number of the infrastructure of the co- what quote unquote common area infrastructure. But a, but a lot of it is, is shared with the hotel resort as a whole. And, you know, as I mentioned before, they, uh, they are part of the resort in all respects. And we, 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 we will manage, we will build the, we will manage the infrastructure.
Yeah. So just like I think the question that, to help is done, would that be acceptable? When they say that they are breaking out the mortgage and sales tax benefits for the leasehold bills? Would be acceptable to not have that broken out?
We, we've worked, we, um, and I'll let Sarah take that, but we, we've had a number of conversations with your legal people to look at those concepts as an eligible activity.
So our legal counsel is, is here today and I, I did address that question to him. So maybe he could comment.
Yeah, the, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. I'm sorry.
Time icon. So the, so the issue here really is whether or not we're dealing with residential, which is not something you can do, or whether it's commercial. By carving that out, by putting a limit on the residential use, saying it, it can't be, it does become a commercial.
I see.
But there's no, but more than half the time it's going to be, uh, available for rentals. That turns it into a commercial project and you are authorized to go forward and to handle commercial matters. So just like you can do apartment houses, you can take care of apartment houses, uh, but you can't do single-family residences, as you've seen with Bellfield. You're not involved with the single-family residence portion of that. Similarly here, what's happening is it, these are, uh, designed such that they are really rental units primarily and being primarily used for, of that purpose, then, then all of the, uh, all, all of the tax benefits for that particular unit, however it's determined, all of that can be, uh, treated as that. But they're not getting any sales tax benefit.
Right.
On the construction.
Understood.
It's as well. So this is just the regular fees that are, that are going forward. It doesn't really involve your providing any benefit to them in, in that regard. And, and, uh, what, what you have is a fifteen-year pilot and that fifteen-year pilot gets limited in time. And it, again, it's a commercial project. So as we do with any commercial project, uh, the, the pilot portion of this, uh, is, it's permissible for you to grant such a, you know, such a program. Well, I'm sorry, but I think the gaping hole is that we heard that there was no absolute, um, limit or ability even to, to enforce, uh, the term of use of the owners. And so.
No, but the owners, it can't be their primary residence.
But you said fifty percent.
By, by primary, by primary use, they're, they're talking about what the IRS regulations are. So that's, that's what.
But it would be as a second home.
Yeah, it could, it could be their, their second home and, um, the second home use, you know, there is, there, it, again, this is primarily used for, have to be, has to be used for rental, uh, available for rental.
Well.
Choose not to do, to use it.
Well, but they, again, I'm not arguing that they can't, um, clearly they're not going to be able to write off on their taxes as a primary home.
Right.
However, they could use it, from what I'm hearing, they could use it three hundred and sixty-five days of the year if they chose to as a secondary home.
If I could?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so we, the, the, the zoning for the local zoning for this area is, requires transient housing. So, so we have worked extensively with the planning board to ensure that these, that the villas are transient commercial housing. So, um, for example, um, they're all sprinkled. They're all designed using commercial building code standards about, uh, size of bedrooms, how many, where the bedrooms are on the second floor. As I mentioned before, the, the sprinkler requirements and the like, that the, 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 we use commercial building code standards.
Nobody, I just want, I'm sorry, I, nobody's questioning any of that. I think what we're looking at is we don't want to give preferred benefits to people of wealth that are just going to use these as their homes. So you made, made a comment that people would not do mortgages on these. What type of mortgages do you anticipate people getting? Residential mortgages or commercial mortgages?
I would as, I, I don't know, but if I had to assume, it would probably be on the building of the unit, some type of residential mortgage because they're building the unit. But the, the, the point is we have written into our sub-ground leases with them and our restrictive covenants. It's very clear that they cannot use these quote unquote as primary, whether it's a second home or primary residence, they can't use, uh, the, the term, the definition of primary residence is the resident you use most of the time. They cannot use these most of the time. And that's built right into their sub-ground lease and covenants that we, the resort facilities manager, uh, intend to vigorously enforce, uh, for all, as I mentioned before, for the primary reason is the whole, the, the whole model, the whole financial pro forma is built on that they will be substantially, um, rented out. And so we don't have a fixed number per se, but, but, but our experience and the regulations, we've written into all their transactional documents are built to, built to ensure that they are transient lodging.
Okay. So.
Which is critical.
And maybe this, maybe it's getting into too much detail, but I just think because of the value of these homes and the amenities, the people that are purchasing these, in my mind, don't need a lot of tax benefits. So my question is, is, I think this is a good way to filter down. One of these residents buys one of these units, agrees to everything you say, and you find out that they're, they, they say, you, you know, at the end of the year, they were there three hundred and sixty-five days. And they say, it's not a problem. We are not writing this off on our taxes as a primary residence. We have no intention to, we're paying, you know, whatever taxes, we paid all the amenities. What's the penalty?
They, they, they are, remember that the critical, the critical relationship is they are a tenant. So we have a sub-ground lease. It's one of the, it's one of the, the, the rationale. So literally the, the primary enforcement is we could default them and, and take back their, their land and their unit, that the unit, the improvement belongs to us as part of the land. And so it, and that's, that's the reason frankly, you know, people ground lease because they have that, that ability to.
I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't grant a mortgage to somebody on that condition, but.
It's the whole thing.
Will it be?
So Liz and Don?
So what I just wanted to mention in case it wasn't clear is if these individual villa tenants are getting a mortgage for the construction, they are not entitled to mortgage recording tax.
Right.
And then same for sales tax. So they would be paying full mortgage recording tax on that mortgage. They would be paying full sales tax on any of the purchases that they're making. So we've, we've carved that out to make that clear that the benefits are not going to that portion of the project.
Proportion of what their values are to the values of the whole project when it comes to the infrastructure. In effect, they are benefiting from all that without paying.
Is there a tax fee, I guess, for the water and sewer? Like a.
No, no, but the.
A utility fee.
The fee that they will pay and the, and the assessments that it, it, there's a long list of assessments that they're going to pay. Are, are all paid to have a mandatory, to have use of the, all the infrastructure of the resort to maintain all the infrastructure to, to the, you know, they're part of.
Got it. Right. So they're.
Right. On a business basis, but we're providing benefits for.
Understood, but the cost, I'm, I'm.
Construction.
Sounds to me like the cost of the water and sewer and the roads is being recouped with the charges that the association is making to them. That's what I'm hearing, but.
Yeah, there's, there's no association, just, just.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, the N R I would be charging them.
Correct, correct.
So the, the.
As a commercial entity is part of the maintaining the resort.
Right.
And they're, they're popping part of the result.
So for the, for the, uh, IDA's purposes here, you have the, they're not receiving, these particular units don't receive any benefit at all for mortgage tax. They don't receive any benefit on the sales tax for the, for the construction. They, uh, there is a fifteen-year pilot that's being paid and, uh, you know, that, so they get, there's an overall reduction. And there are some common areas here and those common areas do benefit. That goes into the process. But if you're looking at whether or not this is something permissible.
Yeah, I understand.
It is clearly permissible. It's up to you to decide this. We haven't seen the actual details.
Right.
That of, of all of this, uh, that they're putting together, this is the preliminary.
Understood.
This is the preliminary review and, you know, when we get down to the, uh, yeah, reviewing the documents, you, you raise a point that you, you know, you want to look at further perhaps. But the point is that while they will do get some benefit, the Hyde Park's concern, we believe, is that they do have some sort of tourist destination facility here.
Sure.
And that's part of what this is about, so they can have people come and not just stay at the hotel, which is not a huge hotel, but they could stay at these villas that they have on the premises. And Hyde Park apparently is worked very diligently and making sure it meets their requirements. And so you're being asked to, uh, provide assistance to the project under those circumstances. And the way it's structured, it's something permissible because it would be considered a commercial entity. These finer points as to whether or not they're getting these other benefits and perhaps they won't get rented. That's certainly not what the town is trying to, uh, compel them to do and make them available. Could somebody, you know, decide they were going to do this? They still have to make them available at certain, you know, certain times. And they, and the enforcement mech- mechanism is not anything that we generally control. But you could look at that, certainly for the fifteen-year period, they have to be concerned about their.
So, all right, so where would the tax, the pilot ta- pilot, this school and town taxes? Who is paying those? Are the individual residents paying them?
Through an assessment.
Is it through a, a mass assessment of the whole project and?
My understanding is it's, it's a massive.
Okay.
So, so the lease is one parcel.
The, the lease is one parcel and, and the resort will get taxed as one. And, and we backstop the resort, the taxes.
So, I mean, I hope you appreciate because of the, my view of why we're, I'm asking so many detailed questions is your quest to perhaps accelerate this whole process. So, you know, we want to make sure that you're aware of what our concerns might be so that they can be addressed. You know, and I'm sure at the public hearing, there may be some comments as well. So we just want to make sure that we have a good grasp of, you know, again, if you had said to me, each individual resident is paying their taxes, that would not have sat well with me as far as the pilot goes. But the fact that it's a, a, a group, you know, it's on the entire thing that, that clarifies a bit for me, but.
And you're, uh, just to, just to respond to that, your questions are the same, the same questions, the same issues that the town was, was very attentive to because their zoning requires transient, transient lodging. That was their criteria and, um, transient meaning commercial. Um, and, uh, so this issue was, was one that for two years we've been, we've been having back and forth on. So your, your, your points are, you know, legit and reasonable and, and not having had the benefit of, of that dialogue and that discussion. It's been the same issue that these villas will not be.
Understood.
So it's synonymous to residential, which would not qualify for the IDA.
It's a very unique, very unique structure to us and I'm sure generally, Mark, you had another question?
Yeah, I think my, my perspective is, as you had pointed out, is one of, we're making a decision about public benefits. And we're not doing this as a sort of an isolated case. There are potentially many more developments. In fact, hopefully many more developments, some more developments like this in Duchess County, not many more, some. Because this is the kind of development that, um, brings people to share in the, our, the experience of Duchess County and the nature and the beautiful environment that we provide. Great. However, we're also talking about public benefits accruing to potentially, potentially accruing to some very, very wealthy people. And why I say it's not in a vacuum is because we have the prior example of Silo Ridge, which is in a, an extended protracted awful lawsuit, uh, against the town for property taxes. And so if you go around, you know, the other way, is there another, um, application that is going to come before us?
Sure.
That's going to wrap in all these things. So I think it's really, um, incumbent on us to be extremely careful and diligent about this.
Is, um, the community benefit agreement a public document?
It will be. Uh, eventually when it gets, you know, formally approved by the school district, which is meeting tomorrow, um, they, they've been, the board of ed has been authorizing their staff to, to enter into this and to, to, um, to negotiate this with us. So they've approved it all along now, tomorrow's supposed to be the final supposedly. They gave us the draft of the agreement. We signed it, they were signing it. They're, they're going back now to the board and get their final approval. So as of tomorrow, I hope it will be.
We haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, yes.
We, or we saw a week ago, the actual agreement.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
This is, this is.
Yes, preliminary.
Chairman, you had asked about the water and sewer. They answered the sewer, but not the water.
Oh, I apologize. I thought that was both. You answered for the sewer, but not the water. The reason I'm asking is there's a development across the street who has put in some significant water and sewer infrastructure. And one of the possibilities of that was to spread it out, the, the cost and allow others to perhaps make use of the capacity that they have and, and allow for the efficient attachment of other people in that area, which has always been a challenge. So I'm just curious.
Yeah, the water is, I, I can't, I'm sorry, I'll have to get back to you on that. The water has been worked out with, you know, the county and, and they've signed off on, on, on all. But we have had discussions with Bella Field as to possible sharing of, um, different utilities and the like. And it's been a cooperative dialogue, but we're not at this point sharing.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. As our counsel has pointed out, um, this is a preliminary resolution. Um, I think we've expressed some questions and concerns and we certainly can, uh, do more along the way. So based on what we've heard, my question to the group, is there a member that's willing to? So based on what we've heard, my question to the group, is there a member that's willing to make a motion to approve this preliminary resolution subject to all the other things that are required?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is somebody willing to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mark.
Based on.
Sure.
For the to come.
Yep. Okay, Jasmine, will you please take the roll call vote?
Joel.
Approved.
Amy Bonedieri.
Approved.
James Baccone.
Approved.
Deja Houston.
Approved.
Approved.
And then one thing I just wanted to point out is in the application, you'll see a letter of consent from the town on the D V A pilot. And as Michael had mentioned, they they hope to get the school's consent tomorrow evening. But the public hearing will not be scheduled until we receive the public consent, the consent from the school district.
Wonderful. So they should be back in front of us.
So hopefully, all goes well and they get the consent tomorrow evening. They'll be back in front of us next month. If the school is delaying in their consent or there's issues, they'll probably come, you know, a little longer than that, but.
Okay. And we'll have the site plan and we'll have all that in our pack.
Yeah, so and also too is, of course, as usual, I've taken notes of some questions and follow up to ask the applicant. But if there's any other questions that come to mind after you leave the meeting, you can email them to me and I'll forward them to the to the applicant to respond to, and you'll have those answers before the final approval.
Great, we'd be.
So, thank you.
Look forward to that. Thank, thank you very much. Really appreciate it, and we'll we'll work with Sarah to get you any additional information you need. So thank you.
Okay, we look forward to hearing back from you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you all for your questions. I think, you know, it's a it's a the scope of the two projects that was before us today are vastly different, but that could be very interesting for the county. Okay, I would like to now move on to Duchess Tourism.
So, go ahead. So this covers Q two. We don't have our Q three numbers and and data yet because it's just the the beginning of October. But I did want to share a couple of things that aren't in the report because it does cover Q two. We, a few weeks ago, got our economic impact numbers, and there's been some new research released. So just to give you a little bit of an update in terms of this research done by a number of collaborative industry experts and and researchers, for every one dollar spent.
Is this in the packet?
Is not. Yeah, for every one dollar spent in tourism promotion, there's a return of eighty six dollars in visitor spending, nine dollars in taxes collected, and even sixty cents for non-related industries, which they thought was really interesting and dug into that more and found that to to absolutely be true. This year, twenty twenty-three, our economic impact numbers, visitor spending, Jamie likes to know that household spending, if they would had to make up for it, went up to eight hundred seventeen dollars. Visitor spending increased fifty million over twenty twenty-two to a new record of seven hundred fifty-six million dollars spent by visitors in Dutchess County, which is more than an average of two million dollars a day. So not only would residents have to pay that eight hundred seventeen to make up for those taxes collected for those government benefits we get, they would also have to collectively pay more than two million dollars a day to keep our favorite farms and restaurants and attractions and everything up and running that tourism dollars support. So tourism is a big deal in Dutchess County. So if you want to skip right over to page two on that report, I'm just going to walk you through some highlights here. We could, our team continues to exceed expectations. We've had the best Q two ever in terms of web page visits at six hundred and thirty-two plus thousand. That's a forty-five percent increase over the year before. Our calendar continues to be the most popular page on the website. Seven hundred and thirty-five individual event listings were added in Q two. So there are a lot of things to do. If somebody tells you there's nothing to do in Dutchess County, you know where to send them. If you look at international, incredible page views there. Notice that Japan, we saw a big increase of visitors. Sorry, top of page two?
Yeah, yeah.
Nice little graphics, increase in visitation from Japan, and we can attribute a lot of that to Desai and the interest there with the sake brewery. And so people coming to our website, looking for more information on what else to see and do, where to stay, those kind of things. But also Duchess Tourism is a part of the New York State Destination Marketing Organization Association, and I'm on the board of that. And we have an E D A grant. And so with that, we are doing some marketing in Japan and promotion there. Our friends in Cooperstown are looking forward to next year's induction ceremony, where hopefully there's a Japanese player, whose name I will not remember correctly, will hopefully be inducted. And so there's generating a lot of interest in New York State, and so we're trying to capitalize that and get ahead of that. So Japan, a fabulous new market for Dutchess County. If you look down below the that graphic there for our spotlights, those are the contents written by our team that highlight all kinds of different things going on. Highest quarter ever eighty-eight thousand plus views of our spotlights. So those get promoted on social media, they get promoted in our newsletter, they live on the homepage of our website.
Fishing is the number one.
It really, you know, we, isn't that wild?
The strike bass fishing?
April first is the first day of the season, but one of the things that we think is because there's so little information out there about it, that our ours comes up first. And so that's where people are going to.
Because Sullivan has the.
Yeah, Rockstone, Trump Town, USA.
Ten mile. It must, I'm assuming it might be a lot to do with the strike bass, what it's fast.
Sure, sure. And, you know, Orvis, Danone, and people like to fly fish, you know, so that we do have places to send people. So it's it's wild. We agree. We were like, okay. So, you know, not a whole lot of information out there, and and we are a resource. So people are finding us, which is fantastic. On page three, you'll see our public relations efforts in Q two. We did a hundred and forty pitches, got seventy-three great articles out it, pitched to Forbes and New York Times, Travel Market Report, The Point Sky, Travel and Leisure, wrote an article, twenty best places to visit in upstate New York, which of course included us. That Bloomberg New York really highlighting our craft beer, calling us the Napa of craft beer. So a lot going on there, and we were interviewed for for that article as well. Had a great fam with in an article with Sally Scott, writing for Qantas Air Lines Magazine. Our initiatives in Australia and New Zealand continue to be very strong. If you flip to page four, again, our our social media continues to grow. We have added TikTok to our list of places to find people and new people and different people. But our Instagram reels, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand plays in Q two, which is a huge number. Thirty percent increase in engagement with people there. Facebook, two thousand percent increase on our reach, engagement, a four hundred and twelve percent increase. It's just bonkers. But but part of that is paid media, like we've, you have to pay to get that. You cannot get organic reach that way. You have to strategically target people in the different markets and people who are interested in travel and and the different things that, depending on what spotlight we're doing, like hitting that target market. So we're being very strategic with the work we're doing. We do continue to grow that and and continue to to take training, to learn how things continually change. They're just when you think you figured it out, you don't, and they change things. So our team is on top of all of that. One of the areas here, this is what I was talking about earlier, YouTube is an area that we would like to grow, but we have not had the dollars to invest in that in the past couple of years. It's been always a part of the what our our agency proposes, and we just don't have the funding to to do it right. To do a one month campaign is like twenty-five thousand dollars. And one month is great if you're doing a specific promotion, like a hotel week or something like that, but just for awareness, it it takes even more than that. But YouTube is the second largest search engine behind Google. So.
Are you talking about having a YouTube channel or?
We have a channel, but there's not a lot of visitation to it. We have great videos there. So getting, helping people find it through that channel, also with digital display ads, so as people are or or unskippable ads. Like if you're going to watch a video on YouTube, you know, those little short bumpers that come before what you really want to see. Right. So so being able to use all the different tools that are available on YouTube to reach people and travels, people, a lot of travelers go there for inspiration.
So the craft beer would be a great idea.
Yeah.
Telling the stories.
There's a lot of audiences we could target. Yeah, yeah, a lot of audiences we could target. So under special events, we worked with Big A Hudson Valley this year. They launched the inaugural Pride in the Sky event, which had more than three thousand spectators on a Friday night on the walkway over the Hudson. It's already scheduled for next year. It's going to be on a Saturday night, which we are hoping will, because it's goes into the evening, will generate overnight visitors. A lot of volunteers came. It was the kickoff for I Love New York for their travel experience season. They go to a lot of different festivals and fairs and events and things. And so that was their first one of the year was coming here to Poughkeepsie. They had their activations there, and they plan to be here next year as well. We do work with Valley Table and support Hudson Valley Restaurant Week. Our restaurant partners receive a discount to sign up because of our partnership with them, and we use the media that comes with that to promote our C I A Chef Finder, our Taste Finder Craft Beverage Trail, our Confection Finder Sweet Tooth Trail, our Farm Trail, anything that's food related, we promote through there. If you go to page five, you'll notice that we're in the process of rebranding. So we've been doing focus groups and research and looking into ways to make our our logo right now, for as as lovely as it is, doesn't serve the purpose we need it to with the way digital media has changed. And so we're looking for something that that works better across all platforms. And also, our our destination has changed a lot. And next year is going to be our tenth year as an independent organization. Ten years ago, we had six hundred businesses on our website. Now we have twelve hundred. Now, the number of rooms we have has grown significantly. The number of attractions we have has grown significantly and changed. And so we're looking for something that helps better reflect and identify us in a way that stands out from our competitors in the region, but then across the state as well. So that's something that we're working on.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
While you're on that subject.
Yes.
We have one new hotel, Bellfield, which is, I've been there.
We've happened once, but yes.
No, I'm sorry, in the Hyde Park area.
Yes, yes.
I went there for a meeting, and it, there was a lot of tour buses there. It seems to be quite busy.
Yeah.
They have a proposal to build another, and now we've got the the culinary, which, again, different demographic.
Right.
But that's really my question.
Yes.
Is there still demand for hotel rooms in Hyde with these two projects?
Absolutely. Because again, if you think about the majority of our hotels, they're in Fischel.
Understood.
The more majority of our attractions.
Right.
Are Hyde Park in North.
And College.
And so, right, and the college is there, so that's going to support them. One of the things that we've been seeing is people switching from overnight to day trips because of the cost.
Right, but is this going to solve that problem?
It's going to help it in a lot of different ways. It's going to increase competition. So hopefully, rates will become a little bit more reasonable. I saw a rate for a Saturday night in September at the Spring Hill Suites in Fischel for four hundred and twelve dollars a night.
That's incredible.
Exactly. And so are there people who are paying it because they have to come? Yeah, there are. But it's keeping a lot of people making day trips. So additional rooms will help.
Okay.
Moving them north where those attractions are will help because we're losing room nights to Kingston, without a doubt, a lot of them. All those great events at the fairground, guess where they're staying? They're going across the bridge.
Sure.
We want them to stay here because we want their taxes. We want them to have their breakfast here. We want them to have their dinner here. We want them to to do all the and support our jobs that that do that. So.
Okay.
And because they are so different, we don't have, it's not more of the same.
Understood.
And we are losing out on that luxury market to all those resorts in the Cass Hills and in Ulster County and and even some of the new ones being developed in Orange County and what's happening in in other places to help us stay competitive here as a county. Because there's other things that they have. Orange County has Woodbury Commons. They crush us in sales tax collection, you know. So things like that, how can we continue to be competitive?
The reason I was asking is obviously the challenge of getting financing on these projects is real.
Yeah.
And so for them to make the case that there's demand is very important. So you're saying that they should have no problems making that case?
I think it's going to be an easy case to make for them. I think, and you're right, bus groups, we were out last week with a film and video crew. We were filming a video about accessibility and our fifty-plus attractions that have been verified for accessibility by Wheel the World. It was like, we just followed like bus group after bus group after bus group at the national parks and at the C I A. And, you know, Desai would like to do bus groups and bring them in and because that's midweek business, it's not weekend business. And so that's really important. We're at our leisure trips coming on the weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, you know, helping to fill those rooms midweek. I always ask about conference and meeting spaces. We don't have enough of it. We don't have big enough of it. If we did, if somebody wanted to come do that, that would be amazing. And yes, the Doubletree is working with the Civic Center. That's more of an expo center. But but there's there's business to be had out there. I know there's some potential sports development out there, sports teams coming and traveling. I have, if if you're a part of that world, my my nephews are all a part of travel sports. They go everywhere. And so that's that's other guaranteed business.
Diamond Fishville.
That's a warehouse.
Exciting. With that, but but anyway, so.
Robotic warehouse.
It's not the same.
Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay, that's okay. Advertising wise, continuing to use social media, semcasting, that's like, and streaming T V. So a lot of people watching, you know, Hulu, Amazon, Roku, Netflix, any of those places that can have some advertising we're due. We're working with a travel spike this year for the first time. That's a new tactic for us. And that that's a group of travel booking websites, like Booking dot com and and Viator and some of those Trivago, other places like that.
Seems like half of them are owned by the same people now.
That's it, that's it. So we're trying to target those people who are ready to book trips. Ooh, I didn't see that one. Let's go there. What's that? So doing all that. Film Duchess filming is was a little bit slow this summer because a threat of another strike. And so that has been settled. So we we helped with eighteen requests for assistance. We're going to talk about the Film Commission. We work very closely with them. We do also do training and seminars for local people to help them understand how they can get more involved in the film industry and take advantage of that. On page six, in terms of new events, we have the country's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence coming up in twenty twenty-six. We are starting early, and because we got out so early, we've been invited to speak at a number of different conferences and talk about Dutchess County as an innovative place to be, to visit, to invest and do work. So we hosted in June Duchess Tourism, the F D R Library and the Dutchess County Historian worked together. We had a fantastic event. More than twelve hundred people came out to this free event to enjoy reenactors and then a local history fair. But more importantly, the the bottom of that first paragraph, you'll see that ticket sales, paid ticket sales for the F D R Library Museum were thirty-five percent higher than the same Saturday the year before, because people came to our free event, and then they also wanted to go in the library. And a lot of people who didn't know about the library, they'd never been there before, but they came to our event, said, oh, we're going to come back. We want to do more. So that was a great win-win situation and collaboration with us. That Commander and Cheers program again continues to grow, and we're going to be doing, rolling out different enhancements to it as we go along to keep it fresh. On page seven, I have copies of our Discover Duchess Destination Guide that were released at our brochure exchange in May. Seventy-five thousand copies are printed and distributed by request at our twenty information centers around the county, at our travel and trade shows that we go to, at distribution centers along the highways in New Jersey and Pennsylvania. They do not distribute printed materials in New York State anymore along the thruways, which is frustrating to all of us. It makes no sense. But that's the situation that we're in. We did a refresh of our finder passes. We have this nice brochure that highlights each one of the eight there, including our Farm Finder, which has fourteen farms that are a part of that that welcome visitors for all kinds of experiences you pick and animal experiences and other things. So that's been very popular. We also hosted our Greatest States Garden and Landscape Weekend this summer, working with our our national parks and private and state-run historic sites to bring people to the gardens there that are so beautiful. We started that program during COVID when so many of them were closed, but their grounds were open as a way to get people going there, and it's becoming very popular. If you flip to page eight, we're talking about our international efforts. We do some solo work, but a lot of what we do, most of what we do is partnering with I Love New York and with Brand USA. Again, Brand USA is like the I Love New York for the entire country. So they do all international marketing. So we were attended, we have a grant, our own E D A grant to promote what we call. So we were attended, we have a grant, our own EDA grant, to promote what we call Beyond the Big Apple. So that's us, Sullivan Catskills and Central New York, to help people get out of New York City, which is our largest gateway for international visitors and up into the state. We like being first because sometimes you just come there and stop. But, so we have this money that we're using to help us get to all these far-flung places, and Don Hopper represents us at most of these different events, and one of the most significant ones is we were at the Good Food and Wine Show in Sydney, Australia, which was fantastic. We brought tea samples from Harney and Sons to give out, because they distribute internationally. Also Crown Maple distributes internationally, so we were able to get their product featured with a celebrity chef who was on stage in front of a few thousand people to showcase our New York State products. And I Love New York helped sponsor the show, and so we got a lot of media attention from Sunrise, which is like the Today Show of Australia, but there's no competition, they're the only one. And then we had them come, visit us here in August, and we did live feeds for two days at a bunch of different locations, highlighting Duchess County for that audience. So, you know, when you're watching your morning show and you see them cut away to Al Roker Live in the field, that's what they did. And so we had six cutaways each day, and it was, it was really fun, it went really well. You never know what's going to happen, but everything was great. Let's see. The next page, page nine focuses on the work of the Hudson Valley Film Commission. Know that these numbers are going to grow because reporting from productions is slow. So 2.75 million spent in Duchess County from productions in Q2, more than 3,000 room nights, 14 production days, 16 locations, 80 film-related jobs for locals, which is fantastic, it keeps them from not having to go to New York City or anywhere else. It does talk about that, that agreement that was reached with the Alliance of Motion Picture and Television Producers and the theatrical stage employees, the Yahtzee.
Is the 2.75 million for.
Just Duchess County.
Direct spending.
Yes.
How much of that, is that the net or the gross?
That's what, that's the dollar amount that was spent here.
They are entitled to tax credits for that, right?
Sometimes, not always. So like documentaries don't fall under the tax credits for available for I Love New York commercials, don't. There's a certain amount that are covered from, from the New York, the governor's office of film for those tax credits, but they have been, we have had producers tell us that they filmed here because of those tax credits, and they made a difference because they will go wherever they need to go, and they like to be here if they can be here, and that helps them be here. So some of those productions that were here in Q2 that we worked with, Mary Shelley's Frankenstein adaptation called The Bride, directed by Maggie Gyllenhaal with Christian Bale, Jake Gyllenhaal, Penelope Cruz, Annette Bening, some fabulous big stars, and they filmed here in Stanfordville. We also had a German director here that has been here multiple times over the years, loves it, continues to come back. They were filming up in Red Hook, Ryan Beck and La Grange, The Materialist, that's an A-24 film that we worked with, 80 local actors, that's where that big number comes from, that one production that stars Dakota Johnson, Pedro Pascal, Chris Evans, who I'm sad I did not get to see because Chris Evans is Captain America. Lodging for Queens of Christmas, that's a BET show, they stayed in our Fischville Hotels. And then Choice Films also, 150 background actors, many from Duchess County, filmed in Fischville and stayed in our Fischville Hotels. So just that bottom footnote in terms that I mentioned of delayed reporting, so Q1, we reported 2,200 room nights, with more information, we found out that was up to 5,700 room nights. So more, more details to come as that filters in. Archman Hudson continues to do great work, they spent a lot of Q2 reviewing grant applications. They had a 56% increase in the number of those applications, 39 total. They hosted professional development workshops to help their artists to take advantage of everything around them. The next page, they held their Duchess Handmade Pop-Up Shop for Mother's Day and Father's Day, they also do it at Christmas time. Shoppers spend almost $10,000 in their pop-up shop there, supporting those artists, so that's really great news. And then the Bard of On, the funding they received, they use a formula from the Americans for Arts Economic Prosperity Study, and they reported that the 6,201 people attending generated 238 plus thousand in auxiliary economic stimulation for the community. They've had sold-out shows, they've continued to add programming, they have a lot more shows than they've been able to host before, and so of course, then that affects the bottom line. So a lot of great work done in the county for tourism, arts, and film.
I have another meeting at 11:00, so I do have to leave in a few minutes, so if you need my vote on anything for the quorum, just so you know.
Okay, when do you have to leave?
I have to leave here like 10:25, I have a meeting at 11:00.
Okay. Sarah?
Um, you need questions? Yes.
LBC budget.
Yeah, we'll need the LBC budget, and then also the IDA table for the BEAs.
For the what?
For the BEAs.
Okay.
Sorry, just.
That's okay, I appreciate this meeting has run very long, I didn't know that we would go this long.
It has.
And I apologize because it always seems like Malane.
Oh, sorry, Malane, how it goes?
She had some good info.
Yeah. Yes, but it seems like every time you're here, it's after a long, other one.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so what else do we need to talk about within the tourism?
Sorry, Malane, we'll come back to it, I promise.
That's all right. I'll see you, I'll see you tomorrow.
No, I'm going to get this all, get this.
It's different, all different.
Yeah, right.
So Malane did include background information and the, you know, normal report stuff that we have. Is there anything else, what else do we need to say within?
So the other thing is, is the presentation of the LBC second quarter, so I can delay that from next meeting.
Probably should.
Sorry, yeah, that's fine.
No, that's okay, we're running very late.
And then, and then, but I don't want to, if there's any questions for Malane before we go to the last thing.
No, it's fantastic.
Yeah, thanks for doing a comprehensive job and report.
But can we just remember that we talked about.
Yes.
Project-based funding, and it did sound like YouTube was.
Could be, yeah. Can we put you on the agenda for perhaps the next meeting?
Uh, I don't know if she's.
I think I'm away.
You're away, thing happening, so, yeah.
Okay.
We'll look, yes, yes, but we'll, yeah, and we'll, I'll relay any information.
And I'll just do more homework and see if we can find a really great project.
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Terrific, thank you so much, I'm going to, I have another meeting too.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're all together.
All right, so where did you want to get the approvals for the BEAs?
So typically, the IDA purchases a table at the upcoming Business Excellence Awards, which is going to be on Thursday, October 24th, at the Culinary, so I just need a, an approving resolution if the board chooses to do that again this year.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a table for the Business Excellence.
I shouldn't, it's not a table, I'm sorry, I'm still back in the, when we did the grant.
I know.
It's not a table, it's a, yeah, it's a, what's it called?
Sponsor.
Sponsor, not a sponsorship, it's priority preferred seating.
Why do we need a formal board member's motion?
I don't recall doing this before.
No, so we do it every year because it's not.
I mean, I know we always pay for it, but no, we vote on it.
Yeah, because it's just spending from the IDA to the LBC, so.
Okay, and how much is it?
It's $1,500.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Amy. Can Amy second?
Yeah.